I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving back to the whole of Congressman O'Connell.
Gail Connor here, standing at floor.
Hi, Dr. Isley.
Here.
Spencer, don't worry.
Here.
Colleen O'Neal.
Here.
Move next to readings of minutes and approval. We have minutes from July 6th, 2020. Are there any additions, distractions, additions or amendments to be made to this seven minutes?
Krista, can you just...
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Maybe, like here.
Motion.
Cody Nelson with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Isley. I'm going to try to repeat your names since we have the masks on and it's a little hard to hear. Is there any further discussion regarding the proposed minutes? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? I'm going to try to go through all of them so I don't miss anybody. Move next to old business. The first time old business that we have is Proposed Ordinance 2020-3, read by Title One, and ordinance amending Chapter 94 weeds. Because it's been awhile since we've been to these ordinances, I'll move back to the January cover of our two minutes and I'll just provide kind of where we were on the ordinance before we get into reading. This proposed ordinance passed on second reading on March 2nd, 2020, is up for third reading tonight. Is there a motion for passage on third and final reading?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Gail Connor with the motion. Cody Nelson with the second. President Congressman Connor, you have the floor.
I have it.
Is there any further discussion regarding the proposed ordinance? Alright, I'll call the question as to the passage on third and final reading of Proposed Ordinance 2020-3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Move next to Proposed Ordinance 2020-7, an ordinance regarding heavy vehicle parking. This proposed ordinance passed on second reading on March 2nd, 2020. Is there a motion for passage on third and final reading?
I think so.
Councilman Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Isley? I can't remember who proposed this ordinance. I was thinking it was you, Councilman Kingery. Was it Councilman Nelson?
I did propose it.
Alright. Well, I'll open the floor for general discussion regarding the heavy vehicle parking ordinance. Any discussion regarding the proposed ordinance? Alright. Well, I will call the question as to passage of Proposed Ordinance 2020-7 on third and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Continuing with old business, we have Proposed Ordinance 2020-4, read by Title One, and ordinance amending penalties for ordinance violations. This ordinance passed on first reading on February 3rd. It was tabled on March 2nd, so it is currently on the table and would have to be taken from the table to have discussion on it tonight. Because this is a larger ordinance with many parts, I would recommend that we continue to lay it on the table to give the council more time to get acquainted with this ordinance. And we had a pretty substantial discussion about it when it was first presented, but it's been quite a few months. My personal preference, I guess I shouldn't say that, if you so desire to leave it on the table, then no action is needed. If you do want to take it up from the table, a motion to take it up from the table would be proper at this time. Are there any motions to take it up from the table? There are nine little pieces of this ordinance that still be on the table, which could be brought back up at future meetings. Move next to Proposed Ordinance 2020-5, an ordinance amending Chapter 75, Schedule 4, Speed Zone. This ordinance was tabled on first reading on February 3rd. It was amended and passed on first reading on March 2nd. Is there a motion for passage on second reading? Councilman Isley with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll start.
Councilman Nelson with the second. Councilman Isley, you have the floor.
Um, this is the last question before we talk about changing the side of the law park, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, in just maybe 25 miles an hour period, the management of the people has got to try to find out how that's going to see that happen.
Any further discussion regarding the proposed ordinance? Excuse me.
Will you read the ordinance out loud so we can hear the proposed statement?
May I just read the language that amends because I don't want to get through it all over. So, the amending language to Schedule 4 Speed Zones would be on the street, Armory Road, which this isn't a major change, it was just kind of a clerical area we're correcting. But on Armory Road, it did say direction Franklin Street, which didn't make any sense. So, the amending language for last time was to change that to eastbound and westbound. Nothing else changed, it was for Armory Road. The same thing, I believe, for Summit Street, eastbound and westbound instead of whatever it was before, they had it blanked before. The main language that we're concerned about tonight is the road, Southampton Street, northbound and southbound from Main Street to Deer Creek, changing it to 25 miles an hour from 20 miles an hour.
Can you explain why that 35 mile per hour sign was posted down there after our first reading?
A 35? It was a 25.
Did that line that back take it down?
It was a 25, and that was a miscommunication between the streets superintendent and mine. He thought it was passed on all three reads, so once I was brought to our attention or my attention, we got to take it.
So, it is going to be 25?
Correct. As it exists currently, it is 20. This would change it to 25.
From Main Street to the creek?
Correct, which is the only section of that roadway that the city controls.
So, it remains 20 going up and back down?
That's up to the county.
The county, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion regarding the proposed ordinance? I'll call the question as to passage of Proposed Ordinance 2020-5 on second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move next to Proposed Ordinance 2020-8, an ordinance regarding parking against the flow of traffic. The proposed ordinance passed on first reading on March 2nd, 2020. Is there a motion for passage on second reading? Senator Kingery with the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Gail Connor with a second. Mr. Isley, or Mr. Kingery, you have the floor. Alright, any other discussion? So, this is the first reading, second. This is the second reading.
So, I know we have the motion up, but right now discussing this, how would we incorporate any other motion to the central operation? You guys finish out the reading.
You can make that motion. Now, okay, we haven't done this before on second reading. We've done it on the first reading, and you can't, you would have to have unanimous voted the council to pass it on the same day as introduction. Yes?
Point of order, I talked to our attorney about this. The suspension would be second, third reading. We just have to hold both readings tonight, hold a vote on second, hold a vote on third. There's no suspension of rules since it's second and third.
Mine abstaining from our city ordinance is that we require them on three different days, so even though the state statute requires them on different days, we're more specific with our local ordinance.
In December, you did this with the ordinance that you passed in December with the last council. You had a second, third reading, or the same evening, so I know it's been done before.
You can do it. I think the clarification is that you're talking about the state law, which is general, he's talking about the ordinance where it requires that we suspend it, even though you could do what you're saying, but Delphi hasn't added language that you have. So, you're correct, and you're correct, but it's just the language that you're saying has to be added. Yes.
Can you take your first stand?
Oh.
Thanks. Makes for better theater.
Trying to find the exact section there, Delphi could, I guess, I would be more comfortable with a motion to suspend the rules of procedure to do vote on the same night, and then instead of doing a unanimous vote, we would just need to do a majority vote, since this isn't the same day's intervention. So, is such a motion made?
Right.
Do we have a second to suspend the rules of procedure?
Right.
Councilman Isley with the second. I'll call the question as to pass it, or call the question as suspending the rules of procedure to commence second and third reading on the same day. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Didn't matter, it was unanimous anyway. Any further discussion regarding the proposed ordinance? I'll call the question as to passage on second reading at this point of Proposed Ordinance 2020-8, an ordinance regarding parking against the flow of traffic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for passage on third and final reading?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There I've got, Councilman Kingery and Councilman Nelson with the motion in second or third and final. Is there any further discussion regarding the proposed ordinance? Alright, I will call the question as to passage of Proposed Ordinance 2020-8 on third and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move next to Proposed Ordinance 2020-9, an ordinance regarding unsafe buildings. The proposed ordinance passed on first reading on March 2nd, much like what we did with the earlier ordinance. My preference, because this is larger and requires quite a bit more discussion and getting back up to date with it, I would prefer if this motion or if this ordinance were tabled to be brought back up from the table at a later time, but if the council does so want to discuss it at tonight's meeting, I would entertain the motion for passage on second reading.
If I motion, then we table it.
First reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Nelson with the motion to the table. Councilman Kingery with the second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, now we'll move on to new business, and before we get started, I'll go ahead, I know I sent you my letter of resignation, but I'll go ahead and read it for the council at this point, because it's kind of going to play into some of the stuff we did tonight. Last four and a half years have been incredibly special to me. In that time, we've been able to accomplish more than I imagined. We completed the satellite projects, done significant improvements on roadways, expansion at the airport, construction of the new fire station at community centers, and modernizing our water system to better serve customers and attract mature industry. These are great accomplishments, and they will be built upon the keep Delphi moving forward, but they're not why I've felt blessed to be in this position. I've been blessed because I've had the opportunity to serve the people of this city who are strong in the face of tragedy. People whose care and commitment to one another can be evidenced everywhere you go. People who volunteered before you could ask and give as much of themselves as possible. I'm blessed because good people and grateful animals live in Delphi. Delphi will always be my home. God, I've got this mask on, I'm covering my eyes. While I intend to complete this term as mayor, life is ever-changing and has presented an opportunity for myself, my family, and my career while continuing to serve the citizens of this great county. After an incredibly challenging decision-making process, I will be resigning from the office of mayor effective August 16th at 11:59 PM local time. At that time, I'll hand over the important responsibility of leading this city to my successor, who by then hopefully should have been selected by the Delphi City Council. We'll get into more of that tonight. On August 17th, I will begin serving as Chief Deputy Prosecutor under County Prosecutor Nicholas McClellan. I'll be working in an office where I have the opportunity to intern among Delphi schools. I look forward to working under the tutelage of Prosecutor McClellan, who has made great strides since being appointed to that position. It has been an incredible honor to serve as your mayor since 2016. Very dedicated and talented city staff has been engaged in every step of the projects underway and planned and dealt with. While I've played a role in what is happening in the city, the department heads, the clerk treasurer, the employees, and the volunteers deserve the credit for what's happening. Our future is in good hands. Sincerely, Mayor for the United States. So, going into that, there may be some hesitation in getting started on the budget, which I completely understand. I would encourage the council still to have budget workshops next week for the following reasons. One is the deadline to submit proposed budgets is September 3rd, 2020. These are the budgets proposed by the executive branch at the gateway, and normally these are the starting points for the discussion between the executive branch and the legislative group. Budget workshops are held to try to iron out any teams before the budget gets submitted so it can be smooth sailing when we get to the budget ordinance on first, second, and third reading in September and October. The budget process really starts with department heads, then it goes through the clerk treasurer and it goes to the mayor, and I'm not going to say that the mayor has no power of the budget. The mayor has incredible power, but it's also a very time-consuming process. We started, I started looking with the department heads at the budget really in early June to have something prepared in early August. By having these budget workshops, it won't prohibit my successor from submitting his or her own budget. These workshops are non-binding in nature. They're really to improve communication and make sure we're on the same page. If there was something the executive branch missed that needs to be increased, we can go ahead and do that. If there's something you want to see reduced, we may not do it for the proposed budget, but the council could amend it if we consider the budget ordinance on first, second, and third reading. They're really just to keep us on the same page. But if we have budget workshops next week, it doesn't mean that my successor can't come in and put together a whole new budget if he chooses us. Also, these budget workshops are open to the public, so if any interested parties remain can attend them next week. So, I guess if the council will be okay with it, I would ask for the dates and times that the council is available next week. I've started working on budget workshops. I do have the first, very first version done that I can send out after the meeting. I just didn't want to inundate you with a lot more stuff. So, I guess I'll open up for dates and times that the council members would be available next week. Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah.
In the evening?
Yeah.
Okay. Thursday evening, Councilman Nelson?
Uh, so technically I have one question that needs to solve this meeting, but it's a setup.
We won't be done outside. I mean, if we get started at 5:00 or 5:30, depending on our company's schedule, we'll be here likely until 9:30 or 10:00.
But Thursday doesn't mark reading, does it? It does, Thursday. If we'll, uh, if we solve it, we can have a switch by the way.
Councilman Isley?
I'd like to talk to the minutes, and we'll be here until Saturday.
About Thursday?
Thursday, if I can help, so today.
President Congressman Connor?
Thursday's good.
Thursday's good. Would 5:00 PM work for everybody, or is that to a... Okay, no objections. I will set the budget workshop for Thursday, August 6th at, nope, August 13th at 5:00 PM at the Delphi Community Center, 311 North Washington Street. At the conclusion of the meeting and putting the tables away, I'll go back to City Hall, email that you have the budget document. I do have some spreadsheets that I still am working on, so they're not budget-related, they're more just for the... The next new item of business that we have is Proposed Resolution 2020-17, a resolution regarding procedure fulfilling vacancy of the mayor of the city of Delphi. The purpose of this resolution is to let the public and interested parties know the process for declaring candidacy to the position, to incorporate applicable Indiana code to ensure the elected candidate meets statutory criteria for the position, and to establish rules to ensure the meeting is conducted in a manner which is efficient and fair to all parties involved. This one, we just finalized today, so I have provided a hard copy. It should be in the packets that were on the table as well. Within, so within the formal ORAS sections, it kind of goes over some applicable state statute that pertains to replacing an independent mayor of a third-class city when there is no deputy mayor. The process is the city council fills that position, takes a replacement to fill that There's some other code sections. Clerk treasurer has to notify you with the date and time of the meeting by first-class mail. You're going to let us know when you're available, hopefully tonight, so we can go ahead and set that meeting. We'll still give you notice, but you should know that one. So, in the case you have any ask for your help on this.
Okay.
The Indiana code, as it relates to caucusing in candidates, has a lot more rules. It is very clear, it says that you have to file a declaration of candidacy within 72 hours of the time of the caucus. There's lots of other language that has in it that the Indiana code does not have for replacing an independent. That being said, Matthew O'Chamore at the Indiana Election Division in the Secretary of State's office, and I've been in contact as well as City Attorney P. D. Martin in reviewing what kind of language we should have in these rules of procedure to make sure that it goes smoothly and everybody, you know, anybody interested in this position knows exactly how to get their name in front of the city council. So, to go, and I know, I just gave this to you tonight, so I'd like to dive into the language pretty good here. Section 1, required filings for filling vacancy. So, currently state statute does not require anybody to fill out any paperwork. If the city council so desired, you can say, "We're setting a meeting date for August 16th." You want to be mayor, show up and tell us at that meeting. That really is optimal for the city council, and it is optimal for the people of the city because it'd be useful to know, even if you're running, you do a little bit of research for three days, and then coming to the meeting is really a little more prepared. The language that we picked in here, 72 hours, follows the state statute for if you get a caucus. We also typed together, or typed up a declaration of candidacy, candidacy that follows pretty closely with what the state requires if you were going to fill out a caucus, but omits some of the language that has been recommended that we don't ask, party affiliation, some of the other certifications that are unnecessary. The city council, for section 1, you can do whatever you want with this. You can say that it's 100 hours before the time fix, you can say it's 16. You cannot require somebody to fill out a declaration of candidacy and show up to the meeting where I think it would be available. The easiest thing to do probably would be to discuss each section as we go through it, and then gather some consensus. So, in terms of requiring any interested parties to fill out paperwork...
So, sorry, Doug, and...
Yeah.
Just before you go on, section 1, page 2 of the resolution, and what this is doing is this is the proposal for the rules of how you all would require proceeding going forward to select your... So.
Oh, just fine. Are there any thoughts, any objections, any amendments that the council would want to see in terms of requiring any interested party to fill out paperwork and require it within 72 hours of the date? Yes, sir.
Are you a lot of people?
Uh, we would issue a press release tomorrow, tomorrow, assuming I get into the office. Beginning of segment, because I need to put it, we'll have to get the form on the city website as well as inside the little transom area.
Are you referring to the declaration?
Correct.
And you will see that that's attached, the form is up to now.
Do we see what?
That declaration he's referring to is attached, the form, okay.
That's a good question.
Could you first, um, currently that's not a requirement for a third-class city.
For an independent.
For a third-class city, because I talked with Matthew as well, and he said the rules for a third-class city are a lot looser than for a first-class city. And so, this is something we're requiring that state code does not require.
State code does not require this for an independent for a third-class city. It does require for a Republican or Democrat of a third-class city. If I was a Republican, it would be required before they could caucus.
Because it would be a caucus instead of an appointment by the city council.
Correct.
So, my question is, so if you're a state class day, because what's the date of the night, should we be probably having a meeting for that? That's something we need to tag on to workshop since we're already going to be meeting and have a press conference.
We cannot tag it on to the workshop. There is a 10-day lag period between when clerk treasurer sends out the letter via first-class mail and when we can hold the meeting. So, if we get that out tomorrow, we're going to hope we're not able to use a little better than first-class mail. I mean, you get it the 5th, which means the earliest you got meetings is the 15th. It isn't ideal because that's a Saturday, Sunday's the 16th, but I think to ensure the easiest transition, you would try to get somebody appointed to the position prior to being reefered.
So, I'm almost thinking we try to figure out what our schedules are like, just to try to get, I think.
I'm trying.
As part of this whole thing?
Yeah, I've got it as an assignment business, but we can do that first. I have no objection to that, in terms of scheduling, a special meeting for the election of the succeeding mayor.
I need to be able to contact our attorney to find out if he's going to be able to be even available on the Saturday.
Are you referring to Ferns?
Are you referring to Eric Ferns? Here. I just made him aware today of your resignation, so he's just now getting this information and for him to give us some guidance, we need to be able to know if he's available to come to me.
Can I ask specifically what it is, or is our liability?
Don't you think we need some guidance? We're finding people that have said after seven months, we're going to be replacing the mayor.
We would also like the city attorney to come in.
That's right, but I understand if you... So, helpful for me because I see that you feel there's conflict, and I can respect that if you do, but I am here to represent you all just as much as I am here.
So, we can submit any questions to you from this point?
I'd be glad, I'd be glad to, but what you're comfortable with is what I refer, so...
I find with getting as much knowledge as we can from anybody that knows more than we do, because you see that you were basically representing the mayor most times.
He has those questions, but I'm glad to help anyone, anytime. I'll get back to you soon as you can.
And are you available on that day?
Uh, which day was that? I'm sorry.
I think it was the 15th of this Sunday, so...
I will make myself available.
I'm going to make the weekend, the weekend. 15th and 16th, shall we make work?
We do have, or we get it up and over the top. Of course, yes.
Alright, if we had it on the weekend, I'd be more happy with it on the Sunday. I suppose that, yeah, going on 14th.
I can come there, you can put it out.
Is that a first? Is there a support on that?
I, Doug and Doug, the statute, I can't find anything that allows you to waive the service via mail for the 10 days, so even if you are provided with this tonight, the personal service, I don't find anything that supports having it earlier, even if you wanted to. I would love to do that for all of you, but following the strict statute, I don't feel.
So, it's Sunday at midnight, what if it's Monday early morning? Can we go without a mayor for a few hours, or...
Yeah, we have to appoint one of us to...
And you would have to, and you still have to have a special meeting to appoint one of the city council members to be acting mayor?
Or, yeah, or mayor.
The problem is... The problem is, seven P M is as early as you can get here. You've got to be on it at six.
Yeah.
And. Don't know a guy or two on the opposite side that, uh, that we want to sneak a couple hours with?
I don't know what people here are now. The other ones are coming, so. If he's gonna go by himself, I guess, probably.
Mayor Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you expecting the candidates to be there that night too or that day too?
Yes, ma'am.
So, what about the four, about fighting, it's still ten days out?
Can we overnight yet today?
Then we only have thirty days to take care of this, correct?
Uh, it's thirty days from the date of resignation, so effectively you can do it until September sixteenth at midnight. Well, or however many days are in September sixteenth. So it's thirty days from the date of resignation for them. Um, but you can have the meeting prior to my resignation as long as I have given it to the county court and I've ten days through this case.
Is it a situation, I don't think you put people in spot, is there a situation where someone can be in person and they can be present at Zoom?
Because of coronavirus.
Like, probably, like, someone has break at work, just throwing it out there, uh, lunches.
I would say typically, good.
Okay, let's put a bed in there.
Would that be a possibility for either of you?
Right, it would be.
I mean, we have to have the meeting before I leave, and I've already said when I'm leaving, um, and I can't change that at this point. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have to have one Saturday or Sunday. And hope that everybody can, you know, get time off work.
You can schedule this out there on the.
Would you send him on the dot? Would you find it be comfortable?
Saturday the fifteenth, you have to do it.
Is, is the, if you did Sunday, it would be seventeen too?
Be the same, I know.
Would it be? Would it be easier to do on a Sunday? People have plans out of town or anything? Does that go on the form on the workday? Is that?
Are there any objections at this time to holding it Saturday, August fifteenth at seven P M?
Yes.
Yes. If there are no objections, I will call a special meeting. You can actually, the clerk treasurer, would you like to call a special meeting of the common council to meet at that time? I hope we both did it together. All right. So, seven P M. On Saturday. August fifteenth at the meeting center, three eleven, North Washington Street, Del Monte, Indiana, close at nine twenty. With that, just to dive back in to the rules of procedure and see if there's any more discussion as pertains to section one, the declaration, um, of candidacy. Now, with the meeting that we have scheduled now on the fifteenth at seven P M. That would give interested candidates until seven P M. On Wednesday, the twelfth, which city hall closes at noon. Work closes anyway.
Do, do they have to bring two clerk's offices?
Yes.
They have to be brought in.
We should have it.
Can we just modify?
I think.
Yeah.
Would you modify it? Could you?
Would you, uh, do?
Thursday at noon?
Instead of saying, uh, amount of hours they went into by?
Correct.
Yeah.
Would there be any objections from the council for Thursday at noon? So Thursday, August thirteen, at twelve o'clock P M. Would replace section one eight. The declaration of candidacy and written consent, I have to change the language in that to say by Thursday at noon as well. Um, but I just ask for some general information. First, middle and last name. Do you certify that you are a registered voter of whichever precinct? You're in, you're three or five. Um, get your written consent to certify that your name will be passed on to the city council um, as a potential nominee and successor. Um, you certify that you filed it with the clerk treasurer by Thursday at noon. And that you comply with all requirements under the laws of the state of Indiana to be a candidate for this office, including, but not limited to, the applicable residency requirement and that you are not eligible to be a candidate due to a criminal conviction that will prohibit you from serving in this office. I also ask for your, um, current residential address and mailing address if that is different. Uh, the name that you would like, um, the name and how you spell it to be given to the common council. And then you sign it for the date, give your own number, email address, um, and that's what will get turned in. Anything further from the council on section one? Uh, section two is incorporation of some of the Indiana codes from chapter three eight one, um, which requires that a person, um, be registered to vote, um, in the area for which they're running. Um, they can't hold two lucrative offices at the same time. That's not to say that somebody couldn't, um, get elected to be the successor or resign from their other position before they take this job, um, but they just can't hold two at the same time. Um, there's a Indiana Constitution provision, article two, section ten, uh, that's summarized in, um, Indiana code three eight one, and I don't think it's been used for a hundred years, um, but it's still in there. Uh, Indiana code three eight one five, uh, is in reference to criminal, um, acts and felonies. Now, it relates to the ability to, um, be in office. And then E is one upon which there's a little bit of confusion. There is an Indiana code for caucuses that says, um, you have to meet the residency requirement. You al- you always have to meet the residency requirement. Um, but when it comes to independents, it's not as clear what that is. Uh, title thirty-six of the Indiana code says you have to live in the city for at least a year before the general election. Uh, some of the other provisions as pertains to caucuses say replace the word "general election" with "caucus", so you have to live there at least a year before the caucus. That same language isn't really present for independent candidates. Um, now, um, the co-council at the Indiana Election Division said it would be proper, uh, to say that they, any candidate who desires to be successor for mayor would have had to live in the city for at least a year before that August fifteenth date that we set for the meeting. So that's why that language is included in there as well. Those, I really wouldn't do anything with in terms of the city council, um, the requirements. We probably don't have to restate a lot of them. What we have on here just to make it a little clearer. City Attorney Martin, do you have anything you can add?
I would just state that this is more so, I think, hopeful of pointing out that these are criteria so that folks can refer to it. Um, it's all required anyways, but it's just nice to see that listed out.
Any discussion regarding section two?
I, I have a question. Is it kind of a question on my end, section two? Okay, if this is all we're getting, is this all we're getting? I mean, are we getting, I'm not saying we need a resume, but maybe like a cover letter or something to a resume to be attached to this? With, like, how long they've lived here and, and, and your participation, and this would be a double, I mean, something, and face with someone who's out there.
So what I was thinking is, we would do similar to what a caucus does on the day of our meeting in that, uh, any potential candidates would have somebody introduce them, give that person two minutes, three minutes, whatever the councilmen have decided. And then that candidate would have five minutes or whatever duration of time the councilor desired to give that information. Um, so that they. So they can tell you a little bit about them, so it's, it's not gonna be everything. But it's a little more than, if we just did it, I, I'm not suggesting we just do it from paper and elect somebody. They would be here to have all the great things.
To the exception, agree with what you're saying. It's just not ahead of time. But I am hesitant to require more than what the statute requires for major political parties. So if we start requiring some sort of report prior when they file the candidacy, that's more than the Democrat, Republican parties require pre-caucus, that makes sense. So try and keep it as absolute consistent as possible.
So, we get the caucus for the, for, uh, for, yeah.
This.
It was, it was pretty much, as I was saying, it was a pretty basic amount of information and they were allowed a few minutes to speak, so, like, what we would be doing would not be so much different.
No, except for that, we're not allowed to confirm, right?
Correct. Yes, uh.
So, like, maybe some others aren't, I mean, that would, I mean, would, would, by these. I'm not saying, I'm not saying something huge of the resume, but, but like, hey, my name is such and such, I've been dropped by on the line.
Interested candidates would not be prohibited from sending you that information. Um, but I am with City Attorney Martin in that asking for any more than what caucuses would ask for.
Okay, true, the, the treaty of the, uh, we would ask the question, if we, if we, that's, I, I. So, now I list the questions to you all.
Okay, guys, we're not done in caucus.
Anything else regarding section one two?
Can you read Indiana code three eight one five, since it's been incorporated by reference?
It's incorporated by reference because it's very long. Indiana code three eight one five, disqualification of candidates. Section five subsection A. This section does not apply to a candidate for federal office. Subsection B, as using this section, felony means a conviction in any jurisdiction for which the convicted person might have been imprisoned for more than one year. However, the term does not include a conviction for which the person has been harmed or that has been reversed, vacated, set aside, or not entered because the trial court did not accept the per- person's guilty plea. Subsection C, a person is disqualified from assuming or being a candidate for an elected office if, smaller subsection one, the person gave or offered a bribe, threat, or reward procure, to procure the person's election as provided in article two, section six of the Constitution of the State of Indiana. So section two, the person does not comply with Indiana code five eight three because of a, because of a conviction for a violation of federal laws listed in that section, that statute. Subsection C three, in a jury trial, a jury publicly announces a verdict against the person for a felony. Subsection C three B, bench trial, the court publicly announces a verdict against the person for a felony or. Subsection C three C, guilty plea hearing, the person pleads guilty or no look contender aid to a felony. Subsections C four, the person has been removed from the office, the candidate seeks under article seven, section eleven, or article seven, section thirteen of the constan- of the Constitution of the State of Indiana. Subsection C five, the person is a member of the United States Armed Forces on active duty and prohibited by the United States Department of Defense from being a candidate. Or subsection C six, the person is subject to five U S C fifteen oh two, the Little Hatch Act, or five U S C seventy-three twenty-one dash seventy-three twenty-six, the Hatch Act. And would violate either federal statute by becoming or remaining the candidate of a political party for nomination or election to an elected office or a political party office. Subsection D, the subsection reduction of a felony to a class A misdemeanor under Indiana code thirty-five fifty-two seven or Indiana code thirty-five thirty-eight one one point five, after the jury has announced its verdict against the person for a felony. Court has announced its verdict against the person for a felony, or a person has pleaded guilty or no look contender aid to a felony, does not affect the operation of subsection C.
Thank you.
Any other discussion regarding, um, section two of the proposed resolution? Okay, section three is where we probably have the most leeway in terms of the council, the order of business of the special meeting. So the purpose of this is to prepare all of us and all of the potential candidates, um, of what's gonna be happening that day when you show up at seven P M, um, August fifteenth. So my proposal, this can be changed, um, just call the board at seven. You do roll call by the clerk treasurer. You do the introductions and speeches. So in some caucuses, they don't do introductions, they just go right into the candidate and the speech. In some caucuses, they permit, um, the precinct meeting persons to ask questions and some they do not. Uh, this one I, I didn't, but it could be easily added if that's what the council desires. So what I've got here is, you have somebody introduce the candidate. That interviewer gets two minutes. The candidate then gets five minutes. Um, you do that alphabetically by the people that have submitted the declaration of candidacy until you get to the end. I don't have any time in here for questions from the council. That can be changed if the council decides to ask questions. Then we would do nominations from the floor, a roll call vote, and then we would go up. I'll open it up for discussion in terms of how the council would like to proceed, um, with getting to know the candidates, um, for this office.
I don't think we should be able to ask questions. So, thanks for doing our little introduction, uh, basically, you know, why, but why do you part of the, or, or ask questions?
So do you want with the introduction by a third party and district director candidate?
So you're proposing that the candidate get up, introduce themselves, give their speech, and then you question?
I disagree. For one reason, if your last name is Wallace, you get the saving here to watch all the rest of the candidates be asked questions to prepare yourself a little bit more than the other candidates have. I think it would be more fair, fairer, if you allow each candidate to spend five minutes introducing themselves and you sit them at a table like this and you ask one question and go down the row for the candidates to answer. You ask another question, go back down the other way, and that way, you know, the candidate with the smallest last name or the lowest last name doesn't have an opportunity to prepare more than Aaron Erickson, uh, who got to be the first. Kind of my.
I can see that.
So it's still this opportunity to ask?
Yeah, it's just the order that we go in.
So it's gonna do a, uh, their introduction to themselves, uh, why they, we've got something there, and the house asking questions. They'll be first, then you're over, the why you part, we'll sit down after everyone's gone through, and then we ask the question, uh, what a question to start from. Okay, we'll sort of do some of that.
Yeah, and then the next question, we work our way from zero to here. However we want to do it, don't make a difference.
There's currently a limit on the introduction and the speech time, um, do you want, so we have questions? Do you want to leave that portion open for you guys, or do you want to have a limit on the amount of time you spend on questions? My question, do you want?
We want to limit the amount of time candidates have to answer questions, so you don't have to answer a question, then go on a tangent and spend ten minutes talking about what's up.
We're gonna do that, I suggest using, uh, like a timer of some sort, so it's not, it doesn't appear. We're going to do that, I suggest using some, like a timer of some sort, so it's not, it doesn't appear.
We're gonna have to get an official.
Yeah.
Do you want to do like a panel for personal for answers?
I think that's tricky because what's, what's the question, how long you vote here versus what is your thought on seller?
Maybe three minutes, three or four.
Could we do different times for questions, depending on what's the question? I think this is totally customizable to what you guys feel gives you the information that you want. With, obviously, we don't want it, you don't want them answering questions for ten minutes.
Do we want to all submit questions ahead of time and then assign the amount of minutes that the candidates will be given answering? Or say each council member gets half, middle, and just.
He didn't resign, that's probably his problem.
I don't know, I'm just. Gives us something to talk about tonight.
Do we all kind of like the panel idea, where we go through, ask all our questions, they go down line? Do we all like that, do we have enough time, give our time, even if it's a complex question? Do you have three minutes, three minutes question?
We're going to be a little wary with introduction of candidate by third party. We're going to keep, uh, candidates introduce themselves, they have five minutes to do that. We'll go alphabetically and we'll just go all through those right around candidate A, candidate B, candidate C, how we're going to be at, and then we will go to uh, panel question opportunity. We'll think of that again before we move on to the.
Can you clarify who the third party can be?
We're not going to do that anymore. Sorry, from my understanding, we're not going to do the introductions anymore. So that third party is out, that third party would just be, you know, somebody that says, hey, my friend Joe's a good guy, he should make a man. But we're going to do away with that.
Here, what I was hearing is that section would be removed. We'd start with section B and then add in a section for questions.
So we're going to get time for the five of us to discuss, or we just have to go to the list of votes?
Add someone else we can put in there. Um, now, any discussions are going to be made publicly.
I think it would be good to, that's, that's my question.
Do you want to hang on for a minute?
I don't think so, councilor, you're out of the minute.
Ten minutes, you want ten minutes left?
Are you thinking ten minutes to discuss or do we want for the panel?
Oh, I'm trying to.
Just time to discuss?
Yeah.
I can put it on there. So where we're at now is the first thing we'll do is speech by the candidate, alphabetically by last name. Then we will do a panel type Q and A with the council members where respondents have three minutes maximum to answer each question. Then after that's concluded, which is at a determination of council on the day of the meeting, we'll go to discussion amongst the council. After that, unless there's anything else we need to add, we would go to nominations from the floor. And then we'll kind of go into what nominations from the floor are. After that, we do a roll call election, we can't do, you know, secret ballot. There's a couple of different ways we could do it. One would be, um, say three people were nominated by the council. We could do, one way would be to go with whoever alphabetically is first. So Adam Addison, and then I go around and ask for your votes on Adam. Then we go to Charlie Charleston and ask for your votes on Charlie. And if Charlie gets three, he's not voting, it's done. And the other way, Chris doesn't need to have votes cast. The other way of doing it, which I've suggested here, is we have three nominees. I go alphabetically, President Pro, Jim Connor, who do you vote for? Who's next? Councilman Flora, who do you vote for? Councilman Isley, who do you, Nelson, well, Kingery's in there somewhere. That's the way I've got proposed here, but either way it's suitable.
The other way I've got to go consensus on fifteen.
Uh, you will kind of go consensus on fifteen. My understanding, um, the.